All right, six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, founded on individual liberty and justice for all. All right. Recognitions. First, I'd like to start off by recognizing our new student representative here, Olivia Jean Grande. Thank you for joining us tonight. Now, I'll turn it over. Do you have any other?
I do, yes. Thank you, Mr. Canada. So I want to get in the habit of recognizing some staff, some community members, and also some students throughout the school year. Last month, we recognized members of the National Night Out Organization for their part of work in our organization with that event. Tonight, I want to recognize three staff members whose names were given to me by our leadership team. So I want to start with the high school and Dr. Gould. Dr. Gould writes, and I'll sum this up for Dr. Gould. As the interim principal, she has been invaluable in my efforts to accolade myself to the junior senior high school. Whether it was provisioning her office during the summer, serving on the many hiring committees we have conducted over the past six weeks, or attending to the needs of our students, Ms. Floyd stands out. I had the honor of working with Ms. Floyd personally last year, and I know firsthand of the exceptional job that she does, the care she takes for our students, both as the building-based nurse and also our nurse leader. So I want to recognize Maureen Floyd for outstanding efforts. Our next recipient tonight comes from the elementary school. And I have also had the pleasure of working with this teacher, both as a phys ed and health teacher at the high school last year. But Dana Reardon does some great things for the elementary school students, both as a phys ed and health teacher, but also, over the last year and a half, Dana's got certified in Wilson Reading. And Dana has really spread his wings as a professional and really is looking to help support students in different ways. So I want to thank Dana for his amazing efforts and his forethoughts in getting the certification to really take his professional career to the next level. So congratulations, Dana. And last, I want to recognize a staff member who unfortunately could not make it tonight. But this member was referred to me by Dr. Esposito. This award or this recognition tonight goes to Cassandra Pelliciere. Cassandra is the new guidance council school counselor at the high school. She came in after a beloved school counselor and really did a lot of work to fix some of our student schedules and really work closely with Dr. Gould and Dr. Esposito to make sure that our students and our staff were fully supported during the opening of school this year. So although she can't be here, I want to recognize Cassandra Pelliciere for her amazing first month of school as a school counselor. And those are my recognitions for today.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the approval of the minutes from school committee meeting on Monday, August 15th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from August 15th, 2021.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on the minutes? They're very, very detailed minutes.
Yes, they are. Thank you, Mr. Mike.
You're welcome.
They're very good. Right. Do you have any comments? Oh, 20. That's a good comment. Good point. August 15th, 2021. Probably should be 2022. So do we have just approved an amended version?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do that through a friendly amendment. You can do that through a friendly amendment. Friendly amendment.
I make a friendly amendment.
To approve them.
To approve the minutes, but adjusted date.
All right. Anyone want to second that?
I would second.
Okay. All right. All in favor of approving the minutes with the amendment to change the date to 2021?
2022.
2022. I keep looking at it and reading it exactly the way it's written on the paper.
I understand. I wasn't hearing. Okay. Now you need a motion to accept the minutes as they were. Like, so you made the motion to accept the minutes with the adjustment? Now you need a motion to... Now you need to do the vote for the actual...
The existing motion?
Yes.
The first motion.
Sorry.
All right. So let's say, let's all in favor of...
So now as approved, as amended.
As amended. Are we all in favor of approving the minutes from August 2022?
... and our world language Spanish teacher at the high school. So although those are two positions that we need to fill, we have been working diligently to do so. And I think we've made some great strides in the last few weeks. And again, a big commendation to our leadership team for doing a lot of that work, those initial interviews. I know that the first couple of days, there were some concerns by some people around the student schedules. I will tell you that that was quickly rectified by Ms. Pelliciere and Dr. Gould. So every student at the middle high school has a schedule, has had a schedule for several weeks now. And I think part of that was the transition from to a new building principal, new staff members, and getting everything in order. And I think that they did a nice job of getting everything set for the beginning of school year. So I want to just kind of reiterate that every student has a schedule, has had a schedule, and we will, we look to fill those positions in the next week or two at the most. And again, thank you for your patience with us as we fill those positions. I then want to kind of shift the focus. Last June, I presented to the full committee the final report from NEAS for our clouded site visit back in April. But did not have a chance to really articulate some of the major findings from this report, so I wanted to do so tonight. And some of the findings that we self-reported, that NEAS came in and verified, are part of my entry plan, part of my goals, which I will also present tonight. So I think it was, it's timely to kind of do them together and to kind of to show you kind of where we're at. So Northbrook Field Public Schools underwent this process last year. So for those of you who don't know what NEAS stands for, you know, the Association of Schools and Colleges. NEAS is a recognized organization that does these accreditation reports throughout the language, both public and private schools. Our process in Northbrook Field began fall of 2021. We put together a steering committee of five staff members, Rich Redding, Meg Sears, Josh Snyder, Shelley LaCare, and Andrew Hatch, and myself, who oversaw the process from start to finish. And these five staff members led one of the five standards that were being accredited on or being looked at as far as where our growth was for the next two years. So I just want to commend them for their efforts, and they did a great job of kind of guiding their teams throughout this process. So this process started with a self-study, a self-study work that NEAS provides schools with surveys that we send out to faculty and staff, to families and to students. We take that information, that data, and we use that data to write our self-reflection report. And what I'm very proud of is that our staff was very transparent and honest about the self-reflective process. We know what things were doing well, and we know what areas we need to improve upon and grow. So I think they were very transparent in identifying those areas for growth. And NEAS commended us for being honest, and really, they supported our initial findings. So from that self-study, from those initial surveys that we sent out, we start to do our work. And our work really took the large chunk of last school year. We used staff meeting times, we used curriculum hours, and we used professional development throughout the year to get this report done. And as you can see, the final report was roughly 40 pages, very comprehensive, looking at the five standards. And just want to articulate the five standards for everybody tonight so they know exactly what they are. And these standards changed over the last couple of years. There used to be seven standards, now there are five. They streamlined the process, which I think for the better. But standard one is learning culture. And that is, learning culture promotes shared values and responsibility for achieving the school's vision. Standard two is student learning. Student learning practices maximize the impact of learning for each student. Standard three is professional practices. Professional practice ensure that practice instructors are in place to support and improve student learning. Standard four is learning support. Learning support ensures that the school has appropriate systems to support student learning and well-being. And standard five is learning resources. Learning resources ensure that the school has the resources necessary to meet the learning needs of all students. So they, again, they are giving us feedback on these five standards. So foundational element, and this is what it comes down to, these five foundational elements, learning culture. And the first one is broken into two parts. So what they came back to us verifying our evidence, verifying our reports, is that the school committee consistently provides a safe environment. And this is talking about the physical plant and some of the structures being in place. They talked about the fact that we were engaged with our Alice Active Shooter Response Protocol, that we have policies in place to ensure the safety of learners and adults through official policies, such as anti-bullying and classroom expectations. So that was the area where we reported and they verified that we meet the standard. Now, you're going to see this throughout this presentation that it says either meets the standard or does not meet. And when it says does not meet, that doesn't mean that we did nothing. That means that we cannot honestly say that we met every little part of that standard. Okay? And again, this starts with our self-reporting. So our own reflection stated that either we met or did not meet. So foundation element 1.2, learning culture. And this is something that I think was really foundational and the backbone of what we're going to be talking about a little bit tonight and moving forward this school year. But the school, the district, does not yet have a written document describing its core values, beliefs, and learning and vision of a graduate. Now, we have done some of this work, and we started some of the vision of the graduate work last year. And truthfully, we did not complete it because I felt that we did not want to rush through it for this process, that we will complete this process this year. We do have core values, we do have beliefs, we do have mission and vision. But those are things that we will continue to look at and potentially revise as we go through our next planning cycle. So we self-reported that it does not meet the standard. Student learning. Again, this is very foundational to what we do. And this is something that I will address later in my goals. But the school and the district does not have a clear, consistent written curriculum in a consistent format or template. And this is something that, as we talked about this as a staff, we looked at where we were, what we had, some of our staff members had done some of this work over previous years, and some had not. And we have had a large amount of turnover the last couple of years. So this is the area that we need to make sure that all of our staff members understand what this means, what this work entails, and then figure out a common template that we can record our curriculum for grades K through 12. So again, self-reported that we did not meet, they verified that we did not meet the standard at this time. Foundation element 3.1, professional practices. The school does not have a current school improvement or growth plan that includes school specific goals. Now, we do have some frameworks, and we do have... If we did a deep dive, we did find a school improvement plan. But we found out that that plan was done in isolation. It was done inclusive exercise for the whole staff. So we felt because of that that we did not meet the standard at this time. So we will be doing that work as we go through our data over the course of this year into next year about, you know, what does our school improvement plan, our strategic plan, look like in the next three or four years? That was a big part of my entry plan, which I presented last, back in August. Foundation element, learning support. This, again, we reported that we met the standard, and we verified this with NEAS. And this speaks to the support interventions that we have, both academically, socially, emotionally, for success of all of our students. We talk about, we highlight our student success team, which we have in both schools, our 504 planning, our Rise in Tech classrooms, which we have in both schools, and also our 25 minute flex advisory period built into the schedule that we have in every student's schedule for academic support. We also, once during that cycle, it is set aside for advisory. And that's a separate curriculum that we worked with an outside agency to develop curriculum for grades 7 through 12 that we'll be using this year and moving forward. This goes on to talk about the SST process, which again is a precursor and a way to support students prior to them going into the special education pipeline, if you will, and getting special education testing. So we want to have layers and levels of support and interventions for our students, and this was noted in the report. And again, learning resources. We felt and was verified that we met the standard. And this is really talking about our support staff. And this is, we do, we go through the yearly building inspections, both by FIRE and our LSA agencies, to make sure that the building is safe. We did talk about some need for some improvements with some of our roofing issues and some tile issues that we are addressing already. But overall, the physical plans of the school is in a good place. Seventy-two percent come from students and faculty imported to the building and a ground support and learning. So some of our commendations, and I won't read all these verbatim. This will be posted on the district's website for you to look at this at your leisure. But it is a positive school culture that ensures all learners are known and valued and have accessible access to a full range of school programs and services. Share responsibly between educators and support staff to support struggling students. I think we see that both at the high school and the elementary school with our parents and ADA's working with our teachers. So that relationship is very much positive. I think that there are both academic, social, and civic opportunities that meet the needs of diverse learners. The use of our dedicated flex block that allows students to access both academic and social-emotional supports. I talked about that a little bit earlier. The successful proactive and responsive school counseling services that support the diversity of student needs. Currently, the structure at the high school is an adjustment counselor and a school counselor. And I think even though they're two distinct positions, they also work in tandem, working with either individual students or small groups to treat our certain concerns. They also really commended the work of our school nurse and the role she plays, not only in working with six students, but also as part of our student success team and working with our school councils and support staff to really close communication. So we talked about Maureen earlier tonight, but she was commended very much for her work with our students and our staff. And our ELL program, which we did hire last year, a full-time teacher district-wide. They commended the work that that person, that role, is doing at the high school and also the elementary school and working with our students that English is our second language. Safe, secure, and clean environment supports diversity of the student body. I think that both these buildings, even our high school was built in 2005, so it's not a new building. But overall, the staff did a great job to keep that building looking great and working. Obviously, it doesn't mean that we don't have future repairs, but the building looks good as you walk through the building on any given day. And the appropriate spaces supports student learning and the curriculum. So the recommendations. Create and implement more student-centered lessons to increase student engagement and increase student appetite. We've already started to address some of this. We prescribed to a program, an online program over the last couple of years, which was, in theory, a good move for our students at the time to supplement some elective courses. But we found out that students really prefer live instruction from a live teacher. And so we phased out some of our online platforming for our students. And we really want to have more student-centered lessons. Increase opportunities for deeper understanding through interdisciplinary learning, project-based learning, and authentic learning experiences ensure a depth of understanding over a breadth of knowledge. So really kind of doing that cross-curricular work. Project-based learning is not a new term, but it's something that we want to do more of. And we identify that, and that's something that NEAS verified. Technology. And we are a one-to-one school building at the high school, and that's fantastic. But we also want to have technology be used more resourcefully and build in technologies, not just as a transference of skills, but also as a tool to help support learning and make learning deeper and more impactful for our students. So it's finding the right program and software for our students and using technology in more of a 21st century learning way than just transference of skills. Provide more opportunities for student discourse and reflection on their learnings so the learners take ownership of their learning. So again, I think this is a cultural shift a little bit and really pushing and working towards more student talk, if you will, student discourse in the classroom, taking back some of the teacher talk and letting students talk and talk about what they're learning more frequently. Again, we talked about the building. Overall, it looks good for the age, but there are some issues with the roof. There are some leaks that we're addressing, and there's some issues with the floor tiles, which we did address end of the summer that we are aware of. We want to continue to use student feedback and talk about our program studies, our course offerings. And I think we will do more of that this year and really plan for our future with our program studies in mind. And then something that I think that we've kind of hit the ground running with is initiated ways to engage a great proportion of families to increase involvement in the school community. I think that starting this summer, we really started to make some connections with our school community and really want to bring those members, those parents, in within the school buildings as much as possible. The calendar this week is just jam-packed with events going on, and we want to continue that. We want to bring the people to our school buildings as much as possible. We do need to create a school crisis team or more importantly, a plan. In the case of emergency, make sure that's revised up to date. And we will start that work this year. And provide adequate and dependable funding to fund the curriculum. And I think that is something that plagues every community and district is that making sure that our budget works for our community, for our students, and for our staff. And that is, that is it. And it is a long formation, that 40-page document, but I think this is, if you will, the broad strokes of what the report said. I will answer any questions, and I will also post this to the website so that people can see this, read this work in detail.
Is there a, is there an avenue for, if people, so when people go and read this online, is there a point person they should reach out to if they have questions? Would you be the person they should reach out to? Or is there maybe, I don't know, a dedicated email address for this where we can compile their comments? I know as I was looking at that, there seemed to be some things that would jump out and someone said, "Oh, that's a problem." But it's probably not that big of a deal.
Well, like I said, when it says does not meet, that means that we do not meet every single thing here. Let's, let's take it. Doesn't mean that we're not doing anything. So I want people to understand that. It means that we self-reported that we're not fully doing this, we haven't fully completed this yet. So it's, you know, it's, I'm not trying to diminish anything, but it's maybe not as bad as you may read if you don't know that part of it. But as far as the point person, I would say that would be, because I was part of this process last year. Dr. Gould is in the district, so I was part of this process. And I would run the process forward as well. But I would say any comments or questions would be directed at me.
They also come back and evaluate.
They do. They do. And I want to add that the process has changed a great deal. I've been fortunate, or maybe unfortunate, to be on several visits over the years. And where it used to be more of a, "I got you," and they come out and really pinpoint things that you need to do, and they withhold accreditation because of that, they don't do that anymore. So now it's a collaborative conference visit, which is what we have, it's about a day and a half. They will come back out in a couple of years for a two-day visit. And they're really just looking to see our continuous growth. So based on our self-reporting and based on their recommendations or their verifying of our self-reporting, what have we done to make improvements? And we continue, it's an ongoing conversation with NEAS about our improvements.
You don't have anything else? All right. Thank you. Good presentation. That'll be on the school website.
Yes, I'll have it posted by end of the week. Okay. If you don't mind, let's, what's the other one?
Who has the hour? Summer's worth of rain, thirty minutes.
I have to say, I like a school ready with a sense of humor.
So my, one of my dogs is paranoid. But I love it. There was no, nothing.
My husband just sent me a big manure, and it's announcing. Yeah, it's a big huge. That's what I'm on, the lightning strikes.
I closed the windows just because I didn't want to mess with the audio too much. If it gets stuff in here, we can open it again. The lightning striking.
That was a good call.
Immediately overhead.
All right. All right. So number two. So last month, I presented the entry plan, my entry plan for the district. And again, I felt it would be important to now share my goals for the school year. I've narrowed it down to five goals. And some of them have direct correlations to the entry plan, and some are more district improvement-wise. So the five, the first one is effective entry and direction setting. And this is really just, there's a lot of words on that screen right now, which I'm not going to read them all right now. I will just say that this will always be posted on the school website as well. But this really talks about laying the foundation with the entry plan that I talked about in August. And this is identifying our work to be done this year with our data collection. We're looking at the district's most critical needs, the strategies and goals that we will use to address them most effectively, and the measures that will be used to assess progress. So I hope to, by sometime in March, probably for the March school committee meeting, I will present to you the initial findings from our data collection and kind of where I see our next steps are. And then the culminating activity of this whole year data collection and conversations with people will result in our planning for the next three or four years. And that process will take place from June to early September of next year. And then we will have a firm three- to four-year plan for our district. And from there, the school improvement plans will trickle down from that district strategic plan. So that is basically goal number one, is talking about this plan in totality. And when I break it down, I have key actions and benchmarks throughout the school year. I just want to just mention, too, that last week, I sent out the first Google survey, which was five questions to both staff and families, five open-ended questions, to kind of get the ball rolling. We're obviously collecting data already, and I will send out additional surveys and then start to target smaller groups within the school community in the next coming months. So goal two. And this revolves around taking the entry plan and making sure that we stay on target with our current implementation of our strategic plan, what we want to do with our school and our schools this year, but also making sure that our teachers and our administrators are on the mark with their goals and making effective progress. So this talks about how we started the school year, both from our leadership retreat, excuse me, back in July, to our weekly leadership team meetings, where we discuss what's going on in the two buildings, and also our plan for both professional development and our teachers' evaluation and observation. And this talks about what we are doing as a leadership team as far as making sure we're calibrated, making sure that I am obviously evaluating, observing the building principals and our directors, but also that they are in turn evaluating, observing building staff to make sure that they are doing what they need to do in the classroom. So this is talking about all those endeavors more in detail. Goal number three. It's the shortest of the three as far as the words are concerned. But this is talking about the new superintendent's induction program, which I'm part of for the next three years. and just my process, my progress through this program and how I will learn as a professional, as an intern superintendent, and basically my ongoing professional development in this school. Goal four is, and this is, again, I mentioned this a little bit in our NEAS presentation a few minutes ago, but align and articulate NVPs taught a curriculum for grades K through 12. And again, this is foundational. This is the backbone of what we do, making sure that we know where we're teaching and our kids are getting taught the appropriate curriculum. And then making sure we have an appropriate template and we have a way of recording and revising this curriculum in an ongoing fashion. So this will take, obviously, time. This will take professional development for our staff to support them with this endeavor and working with building and school leaders to make sure that they have that time and that training. I will tell you that on October 7th, which is our first full PD day, we have a gentleman by the name of Mike Woodlock coming in to do some UDL training, universal design for learning, which will, again, will really support some of this foundational work for our students and our staff. And this will be looking at what we teach, why we teach it, and making sure that every student has equitable access to that curriculum. So that's, that's going to be our first full day PD day this year. Will be our, either introduction or revisiting UDL and how that looks. And as part of this goal, one of my benchmarks for this year is to have at least 25% of our curriculum in grades K through 12 completed and aligned by the end of this school year. And goal number five, this is also a school, a district improvement goal. This is looking at, looking at building an alternative pathway for some of our students. And what I'm even going to add is currently we have a life science pathway, biology, physics, physical science, biomedical science. So we have the core classes for science, but what are we doing for an additional science pathway, a math pathway for students? And I would like to explore and look at what we can do for tech and engineering robotics. We've already started having some of these conversations. And this really looks, this is based on firsthand knowledge, but also looking at some mass hire data from 2019 and looking at where the job market is for our students. We want to make sure that our outgoing seniors are prepared for both college and career readiness. And we know that a lot of our students who either are going to college or not going to college need to have some more skills when they move into the workplace. And what the mass hire data is telling us that robotics and automation are some of those jobs that are being filled and are most high in demand for our students in this area. So we want to make sure that they have the skills, the training, and the pathway, and certifications possibly, to be in a better driver's seat when they leave Northport Field High School. So this first year is very exploratory. It's looking at what kind of curriculum do we want to adopt? What's, how we can define our pathway, looking at our usable space, looking at our adorables, our consumables, what we need to order and purchase for this to be successful. And really kind of looking at this big picture and what's this going to entail for us two, three, four years down the road. I know that two, three, four years ago, we had some great success as a robotics team at the high school. We definitely want to bring, phase that back in. But we also want to build a curriculum. So it's not just a club, it's also part of our program studies. So this is, this is the last goal that I'm talking about tonight, but I think this is something that will be ongoing, not only this year, but years after. Any questions?
Firstly, I'm a big fan of technology, engineering, and robotics. I can't tell you, I have never dissected a MIG since high school. But I, but, you know, stuff like that is skills that transfer out into the real world a lot better. Anyone else have anything?
I think it's great.
And also, it's, just for the four people watching at home, it's not a, when, when Mr. McCormick says, you know, "We're building curriculum," it's not, the school does not have curriculum. It's alignment, right? We're looking at getting everyone aligned so that as a child moves through the school, there's less redundancy and relearning of stuff that might have done in previous years. It's making sure it all carries through on one path.
There are state curriculum frameworks that we, that we need to be following. And it's that horizontal, vertical alignment, you know, between the two schools and within the same school that needs to be happening, during those conversations and kind of breaking down what we're teaching our students and why.
Tired of talking now?
Uh, he's right.
All right, let's go to administrators' reports. Dr. Gould, you want to go first?
Sure. In reporting out this week, this month, excuse me, I categorized my report in community outreach, management, as well as teaching. Right away, I've sent out eight household newsletters, one each week, trying to break down what I've done, expanding my capacity in terms of photos, getting them involved. You'll see that I'm actually going out there and playing ball with the kids. We pull up the shooting machine in the cabin, we take pictures. I call that oops with cool. Thursday, we had about 12 kids come. Friday, we had about five to six kids come. So we do this, and it's away from me. Like while I hold office hours and make myself available, no one's coming to my door at night and saying, "Hey, I want to talk to you, Dr. Gould." But by playing who? I'm able to play knockout with the girls' soccer team who's waiting for their bus to show up. I have those 12 guys who come, and the girls are included as well. Some kids of all, like, skill levels come and we talk. And I get to know those kids. So oftentimes, that building a relationship there helps pay off in the cafeteria or in the hallway when I see them. And it's exciting for me. And I get out there and they're like, "Hey, you hit that shot." It's kind of funny, you know? And I'm like, I bring some old school to the new school. So it's a lot of fun. So basically, I also met with Ms. Eva Brown for Oktoberfest to learn more about that and to help promote that within my newsletter. And that was great. In terms of last Monday, we had a memorial to 9/11, where we had a minute of silence. And I spoke to this, as well as Constitution Day last Friday, just to celebrate Constitution Day, which is a state end date. Let's see. Met with the librarians over at the public library to say, "Do you want to use our facility? Let's talk about this." I'm working with Brandon at the National, excuse me, at Northport Field Historical Society. He said, "Come take a tour of the high school. We do want to do a historical display." They have really cool 1948, 1955 Letterman sweaters. That's like something out in the recent, you know, winning the championship in basketball. And he's talking about bringing stuff over and just seeing the kids so the kids get a sense of who they are and what they're about. Historically, it was really a thrill to spend like an afternoon over there after school a couple of weeks ago to see that the mills we used to have here, there used to be an asbestos factory, but also we were the leading manufacturer in Northport Field of shoes and poor slaves in the South. And that was an interesting history. One historian claimed that we had the best collection of those shoes in existence, which is kind of cool to hear. So I'm learning more and more about this, and I want our kids to learn more and more about this. Librarian, I met with them, and they said, "They're always welcome." I just want to do a quick 20-minute, "Hey, good to know you." They want to do an hour and a half tour. And they're very excited. So that's something I'm trying to keep in my back pocket for the future, to go over there. So it's exciting. In terms of management, when we have a faculty meeting, I divide the faculty into four groups: curriculum slash program of studies committee, safety committee, faculty handbook committee, student parent handbook committee. So we review this, and then we go through the school council, which I'm, in the process of forming that school council, I sent out invitations to faculty, as well as trying to recruit students to attend, and as well as community members. So that in that idea is for them to have input and the, so the principals not acting alone in the faculty making decisions. And I think that's important. It's a form of social studies feature to have checks and balances. So I'm excited at that.
You should play him for horse to make them come to you. I'm just saying. I mean, if you're that good at playing basketball, you might want to play him for horse.
No, I just surprise them. I act like I'm slow and old, and I am. And once in a while, I'll hit a shot. But it's fun, and they're great kids. But also, this Mr. McCormick alluded to the fact that we addressed some of the scheduling issues, and I give a lot of credit to not just Mr. Hackerman, as well as Ms. Pelisier, but everyone who had input on that, trying to fix that and make sure we get the very best schedules we could get. I want to thank Dr. Esposito as well and Mr. McCormick for his patience. And we got it done. And it was, it was great to see these kids happy. So I want to thank and recognize them all. One of the things that we've worked hard at is hiring and promoting people. I want, I don't think we, you can't do better than Mr. Garrett Kennan. He has a special touch about him around the kids. He's very nurturing, great A.D. They promoted this year to A.D., second-year P.E. teacher. I want to thank Ms. Jamie Birmingham, who's a great face to the high school, the front office. And she's, you know, going through and figuring out her way around the office, adopting, I'm talking to Allison Overtown Hall, trying to adopt that institutional knowledge to her understanding. And we're learning together. So that's exciting as well. Also, Mr. Mark Zimmern has a personality that's larger than life. The kids love him. And he's a STEM teacher K through 12 that I split between the high school and the elementary school. Ms. Carly Kemp was a great, fine biology teacher, very young, a resident of Eastbrook Field, very familiar with our culture. And she was a substitute teacher at Tantascwa, graduate of veterinary college, and has done very well, acclimating herself to the school. Dr. David Belbon, who lives, resides in, resides in North Raffin, but he is a native of Azerbaijan, a former member of the Soviet Union. He's a physics teacher for us, about at the University of Michigan, where he got his doctorate from. Southeastern, excuse me, South Louisiana Tech University. He taught it as well, as well as the College of the Holy Cross. His parents, he's a legacy. His parents were physicists for the former Soviet Union, which is startling. And he's acclimated to the high school, and he's learning his way around. He just got his certification as a physics science teacher. We're excited to have him. And Ms. Pelisier, I praised her to the heavens. She's been wonderful and a wonderful acquisition in Eastern Quavo. And she's a first-year guidance counselor for us, and she's made a world of difference. Danielle Swanson is very sensitive, a middle-school specialized teacher, and she's done a great job as well. And it's exciting. She helps me out on lunch duty. And what I'm trying to do is build relationships with the principal, have them get to know me, and have them get to know them. I walk through these classrooms, and teaching and learning is going off. There is a lot, there are a lot of positives, and it's exciting to come to work every day. And that's uncommon. I want to say, the other day, we had a student who was struggling. I went to a teacher and I said, you know, this student has only a year or a half to go. Could we do some credit recovery? And he finished my sentence and said, "Absolutely." And he says, "Not a problem." I can't say how uncommon that is, that we, you know, there's always room for growth. But oftentimes, teachers are really reluctant to reconsider their grades. And they're, and here, there seems to be an attitude of, "What do we have to do to make the school succeed?" That's uncommon, and that's something I really value. I just want to point that out. And it's a credit to these teachers, this faculty. I did review what I expect from the teachers in the classroom as far as no one's in the classroom. Not only citing evidence as stated by the state, but basic common sense tonight. For instance, when you ask a student a question or a classroom, a class question, give them a wait time to follow that question. Let them answer. Teach bell-to-bell. That's my expectation. You have to maximize your learning time. Have a backup plan to your task. If you have half the class finish early, sit them around, and there are ways for the rest of the class to finish. That's no good for anyone. So have that backup plan. And you talk to them, give a formative assessment. Ask them, what I mean by that is, if you ask a question, "Do you understand this, kids?", have every kid give a thumbs up or a thumbs down. And if they give you a thumbs down, go back and cater their instruction to their understanding. And no one disagreed. They all, I get the impression they were comfortable with it. So I went through what I expect and delved into the more form of evidence. So that's what I expect to see. We did complete, as you know, seventh-grade orientation, and that's a credit to the staff who came out, as well as those upperclassmen who served as mentors. So far, I think I've had about, I've updated my list. I think I've had 10 goals meetings in the past couple of weeks, and it's a thrill to work on their goal statements with them. And I've completed walkthroughs. We're also looking at a Washington, DC trip you've probably heard of, as well as a Christmas Carol field trip this December. And that's what my past month has been.
Yeah, well done.
That's it.
Did the Christmas Carol, the handover?
Yes.
Yes.
They're all starting to hit that, and so it's great.
That is such a good show.
Oh, I also, I forgot, I'm remiss if I didn't mention Ms. Megan.
That wasn't it.
That's right, that's right. We were able to, we had a, one applicant from a foreign country for a math position, and then we had an house person, Ms. Megan Hansen, and I was thrilled that she said yes when I approached her on a soup going from a paraprofessional to a math teacher. And we were thrilled together. And I have to say, I can't overstate this enough. We were in a pickle, and I give a lot of credit to Dr. Esposito as well as Ms. McCormick for their patience. I would call other schools to try to get a world language teacher, to try to get a math teacher, a science teacher. And I'd say, "Listen, could I just have, on school spring, I see you have a light position. Could I just have your second, third, or fourth choice?" And they'd laugh at me in one way or another. They would say, "John, we wish we had a first choice." That's how tough it is. I had one superintendent, assistant superintendent, say to me down on the south coast, "John, I had a contract ready and waiting for this math teacher in the interview." And he said, "No." Teaching, the teaching marketplace is the lights I've never seen this year. So it's been really tough to give you a context.
I know, I understand.
So it, we've done very well. And I give credit to them and to that table.
And we'll say to the new STEM teachers at home, too, the kids.
Yeah, for good things, too.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. I'll pass that on.
All right, my being here, you're next, Dr. Esposito.
Thank you.
I'll summarize Mrs. Priestley's.
Fantastic. So I'm going to, I'm going to get a little more brief. So we have gotten off to a very pleasant air. It's been very busy. We, I can't remember where to begin. So we started off with a lot of IP's already, and we've had quite a few meetings. We, I've already been to other districts, so we've had some students that are placed at a district. I've already been out to those meetings. And the way I broke up mine is a little, a little different. I did some management tasks. But a lot of what, a lot of what we've done to get started this year is ensuring that our transportation for our students have been in place, doing some hiring, which I know Mr. McCormick mentioned. I think there's two areas in our department that we don't have filled right now. And one is our board-certified behavior analyst had resigned right before the beginning of the school year, and that has impacted that position. The position does not serve directly to students, but oversees the behavior and the behavior plans of our students predominantly. So what that has done is it has left a gap for us for sitting at team meetings and for doing any functional behavioral assessments. And then for any student that has that service on their ed plan that is not being implemented right now. So what we have done is I have worked with some agencies and interviewed some agencies to see what they can do to support us. And right now, I am working directly with one agency to see for any outstanding evaluations, if they can do those. And so it is very promising. And the other, the other area is our speech and language department that we did have a resignation. We do have a speech and language assistant We do have a speech and language assistant that is currently able to do all of our elementary students. And we do have a contracted speech and language person right now. And the students that are not getting serviced are the ones up in the middle and high school. And they're, the numbers are very low up there. And we're doing our very best to provide the service and find someone that can take over the upper grades. But other than that, we are keeping track of compensatories. So any students that are not getting the service, we are keeping track. And we have let the families know from the summer program that we're not able to get the service over summer, that we're keeping track. So as soon as we are able to secure, that they will get those services back. So that, right now, as John said, from, from teacher positions, there's a shortage. But from the B.C.B.A. and S.L.P., it is universal and specialized. Those are probably two of the hardest positions right now that my colleagues are facing as well. And specifically in this area, they're very, very challenging. And so most, most places are contracting out. And even contracting has become very difficult. So we've certainly, certainly it's not for lack of effort. So those are the two areas that we are definitely facing here. So, but we are, as you saw in my write-up, we are looking and keeping track of compensatory. As you know, that we're in the middle of, high school did the Niasq last year. We're doing the tiered progress monitoring. A lot of that falls under keeping track of compliance issues. It looks at our special ed and our civil rights. So those are two areas that we're doing a lot. There was a self-assessment last year. And right now, we're working very closely with the department and kind of joining forces with them. It is exactly what Mr. McCormick had said. It's not a gotcha mentality as it was years ago, but it's really collaborating with us. So we're working really hard with them. And I'll be doing a lot of work on that before they come in January. I am really excited to report that we had our first CPAC meeting. And it was nice to have three parents show up. But that's just the start because we're, we're kind of building initiative and they're going to be here on the 21st. And we're going to pass out flyers and then we're having momentum to have another meeting on September 27th. And then we're going to have meetings every month after that. And so we're really hoping to get some positive energy, some momentum, get families involved. And then we'll be able to do our annual trainings. We're going to set up, as I mentioned last month, that vision of getting maybe a training, having themes, and then have, you know, really supporting the families in town. And then they're going to do some voting for the committees. And so it's, I think there was really positivity at the first meeting, even though there were only three. But it's this solid vision of the families wanting to come together, wanting to make it to be fruitful. So that, I was very excited to have some families show up. So that's, we're going to look forward to that. And then we spent some time at Professional Development Day, doing some training with the whole staff. So that worked well and really supporting what Mr. McCormick had said with one of the Niasq areas, which was, how are we providing a lot of service? And that was met. But it was also really nice to have an opportunity for me to do a training with the whole staff. And, and then I had done it also with the new orientation for new staff. And then I've also been working with making sure that we're getting ready for our grant writing. And doing our, you know, child find posting and making sure that I have done the proportionate funding for the homeschool and private families. And letting them know that if there were, if, you know, they are suspecting that their child has a disability, that there's funding there available. So we want to make sure that we're reaching the whole community, that we're identifying students and making sure that we're meeting, you know, all of our, all of our community's needs. So that's, that's really a lot of what we've been doing in, in our department and staying busy. Marketing with, with my colleagues and making sure that our, our students throughout the whole school are getting what they need.
CPAC took a big hit when it went fully remote meetings and stuff. So you can get that drummed back up. Where do you usually post the info in the meetings? Where do people go to find out more about that? Is that also on the school website?
Yes.
Everyone needs to bookmark the school website.
They do.
Because there's a lot of information there.
And CPAC has their own page as well, Facebook page, so they're posting it there. And then Mr. McCormick sent out a flyer and a smores. So he sent that out and he sent, he sent it out on, I believe, two separate occasions, you took that. So we're, and then now CPAC is up and running. And they're going to be sending flyers and they're going to be sharing. So there, there's a lot of excitement around this and building some real positive family, getting excited to do fundraising. And, and I can say that there was really good thought and brainstorming happening. And, you know, how to get more families involved. So I'm excited about it.
Great. I know Mr. Heckman has spent a lot of time acting as like the hear ye, hear ye guy for the school committee. And spreading around this, the information when it comes out, making sure it's on all the 50 fat town Facebook pages. So it's a small town, we have to run our own Facebook page.
All three towns, five towns, people have their own.
Chris has done a great job getting it out there and trying to spread the word as much as possible. So we'll, we'll be sure to spread that around and get some more people there.
Perfect.
Sounds like, sounds like you've got some good momentum going, so let's keep it going.
We'd like to have it up and running and be really strong.
All right, you can provide the inside information, so if you'd like to read them.
Ms. Priestley?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
He summarizes the, the highlights.
Right, so Ms. Priestley is unable to attend tonight, so we're just kind of taking a overview of her report. You've heard me talk too much already tonight. But she wanted to highlight, like Dr. Gould and Dr. Esposito did already, the opening of school, the first two days of P.E. I think, I want to commend both building principals and Dr. Esposito for their amazing efforts and their work with their individual buildings and staff. But also the willingness of our entire staff to engage in a difficult conversation about equity and race and inclusion. And one of our themes this year as a, as a staff and really articulate this to our community is really building a sense of belonging for all of our students and our faculty. So we had a great conversation, which will lead to many more throughout the course of this year, about that particular topic. I want to mention that we have a big night coming up this week, this Wednesday, the 21st, here at MBES. That is our, our back-to-school night and our PTO cakewalk. And what we've done this year, very similar to the National Night of Events back in early August, we're bringing back many of those outside agencies to kind of showcase what they can offer our students and our families. So it's a back-to-school night, but it's also a back-to-school with a lot of our support staff on hand to kind of show off and to highlight what they can do for our students and our families and our staff members. So we're excited about that. It's an extra layer that we have not had in the past. And Ms. Priestley, like Dr. Gould, is actively seeking interested families and students and staff members to be part of her school council, which I believe she had her first meeting this evening with five or six. So I think she had that through Zoom. But the school council is, again, as Dr. Gould alluded to earlier, you want to give principals feedback, the direction of the building, the vision of the building. And they're very important in making some of those decisions going forward. So I invite my really applaud families and students and staff to be involved as much as possible.
Right. And the cakewalk is on?
Yes, that's Wednesday, yeah. So it's the back-to-school and the PTO cakewalk.
Yeah.
So Wednesday is going to be a jam-packed night. So we can get really for a good spot.
I consulted on the cake yesterday.
Right.
I'm a cake consultant. How'd that work out? Came up pretty good. I'll show you a picture later. All right. Old business. So previously, we talked about the North Brookfield Public School's Facebook ownership policy. Our policy subcommittee, I asked them to address that. So Mr. Heckman sent us this. Everyone got a copy of the proposed. Would you like to read out the thing?
Sure.
We, now we need to, we do need to vote on this, whether we adopt it, so.
So I don't know if anybody would like to suggest any changes to this, but Mr. Mast and I have meant to discuss kind of what the, what the goals would be in terms of the protocol for turning over accounts. And I know last meeting, we had talked with the new I.T. director and he mentioned that he could set up a specific, like, social media email. So we kind of made one up, socialmedia@mbschools.org to use as a placeholder, but it ends up being something different. It'll be whatever it is. So the policy reads, "All social media accounts related to the North Brookfield Public School District will be owned by the account socialmedia@mbschools.org and will be maintained by the superintendent and I.T. director of North Brookfield Public School." So the idea is that both of them will have access to it. "Upon resignation or termination of either the superintendent's contract or I.T. director's contract, all passwords related to social media accounts will be changed. And privileges to pages and the ability to access the accounts will be revoked immediately upon receiving a letter of resignation or termination of contract. In the event both the superintendent and I.T. director positions aren't vacant, the ownership of all social media accounts will be maintained by the chair of the school committee until the superintendent is hired."
So do we have a motion to adopt that policy and then we can talk about if we want to change it?
I'll make a motion to adopt the new ownership of North Brookfield Public School's social media accounts policy as described in this document here.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the wording of that, in other words? So I have two concerns. One is, we're focusing this basically around Facebook. And there are other social media platforms that we're using for communication. So I want to make sure that we're including those in the. So the thing is that they don't all work the same way with how you get access, right? So I want to make sure that we're including all of them. We're going to call it a social media policy, right? So if we're going to do that, then we need to make sure including how you access all of them with, with this policy. So that's the first concern. Second concern is, being in this business, this is what I do for a living, it's never good to have a situation where you could possibly have only one person who has access to that. I guess it's, sorry, I'm sorry. That only one person who has access to that information, right? So in the event that the superintendent's still here, but the I.T. director leaves, now we only have one person, right? So there should be a contingency in the event that one of, one of the other leaves. Somebody else has access to that account in the event. So I had an actual situation in January with one of my people died and had passwords. And nobody had them because the prior vice president of I.T. was the guy who had the other ones. And he left in June. He left in June and then my guy died in January. And now nobody had them and we still don't have them. So I just don't think it's ever a good situation where you have only one person who has that password for any period of time. I think this should always be a contingency, whatever that contingency is. And then the third is that it should never be the one account that owns that account that actually does the posting. So if we're going to use a social-dash-media account, socialmedia@mbschools.org as the account holder, then that account holder has to grant access to those other individuals who are going to post and give them their rights. But that account can't be the one that's actually doing the posting.
So I'll just say, it doesn't say in here that that account would be doing the posting. It's that that account would own it and that way.
Yep.
Because last month, we had talked about Mr. McCormick not having the ability to give other people in the building access to it because he's not the owner. So we had discussed last meeting that this account would be the owner of the pages. And then the other people could be granted access to it. And that's why it's specific, it will be owned by, not necessarily that they're going to be the ones posting it.
Yep, and I didn't say that that's what it said. I'm just making that statement as a person who's in this business all the time, that's all.
And then I guess the only other comment that I have is, I don't know. I know it says pages in here specifically, which is, I think, what you're referring to about Facebook. But it also says privileges to pages and ability to access accounts. So that was kind of the way to make it generic because I didn't think about not making it specific. Because probably no Facebook won't exist in five years and there'll be another one.
Yeah, so my only concern is, so like, Facebook will not allow you to use this email address as the email address unless this email address has a Facebook account.
Yep. And last, last month, the I.T. director said that he could set one up for the school using this as the account.
Yep, and I'm just saying that there are other sites that are very similar and may or may not allow. Like there are sites that if you put in North Brookfield High School or North Brookfield School District as a name, are not going to go through. You're not going to get the account. And all I'm just saying is, if we're going to say this is a social media policy, we need to either broaden how we're going to grant that access or we need to be specific about the fact that this is for Facebook. Or we need to give us some room or give the superintendent some room or give whomever some room that they have some leeway as to how they're going to access that account. That's all I'm saying, so. I'm not opposed to it, I think this is fine. I think the policy is fine. I just think that there's going to be some tweaking either today or over the time. I know it creates a, it creates a policy stovall when you make a policy and then that policy creates additional policies. But I think it's almost, from what I'm hearing from you, it, it sounds to me as though if we did something like this, this is vague enough to kind of cover future social media accounts. But I think at some point, we might need a policy about where the school exists on social media platforms. Either via an addendum or a rider or some sort of appendix in this thing. You know, this is the school's allowable social media platforms. And if they invent some new social media platform, we, we would probably need a policy about who can decide what ones we join. Now Pandora's box is open on, on social media at this point. We have a certain number of things. So I think if we adopt something like this, we then need to follow it up by, A, figuring out what constitutes a school's social media site that's being maintained by this email address. And B, what do we do if there's some new trendy platform? What if MySpace comes back and we have to get, get on board with that? You know, it's, right, you never know, it might be thrown in front. So I think it's just something. Right, to your point, I agree. I absolutely agree. This is a good start, right? All I'm saying, and these are the three things I think are concerning, that we may have to come back and readdress. I'm not saying don't do this, I think this is fine. I'm just saying that these are three things that we need to make sure that we're looking at. And mostly, the one about the fact that there could be a situation where Tim is the only guy who has the access and, and nobody else because our I.T. director left or because Tim goes off to somewhere. He won the Mega Millions last night or something, he didn't tell us or whatever, right? So. I'll shoot you the password on the way up. I'm just saying, it can happen, that's all. So I'm just putting it out there. So I have no, I have nothing that I want to pose as a way to stop this from going forward. I'm just simply putting those out there as things that we should be aware of, that's all. All right, well, we have, on the table here, we have this. It's been seconded. Shall we vote on accepting this? All in favor of accepting this to the policy of the schools? unanimous? Do we need a roll, do we need a roll call note for a policy, right? Okay. All right, so I think now that that's been voted on, we can maybe talk more about what else we need to supplement this. But I think this is a good stock gap for, you know, just to have something, something in place anyways, to build off of. All right. New business. Oh, wait, regionalization update. Now, they had a regionalization update at the selectmen's meeting the other night. Do you have anything new you want to update on the upcoming meeting, which I believe is tomorrow night? Six thirty in Quaybod. I don't have anything other than what was said at that meeting to share. I think there's a lot of things to pay attention to right now. And so I would just say, you know, if, if you have children in the school district, please pay attention. Those meetings are open, just like these meetings are open. Come to the meeting, pay attention, and we'll do our best to fill you in as much as we can. We have the, basically, if you did not see the selectmen's meeting the other night, obviously, it's on YouTube, you can go back and watch it. There was a good update made by the other two members of the RAC committee from North Brookfield. But basically, we're at the place now where we're looking at what would a regionalization agreement look like among the three towns. The elementary school kids would not be moved. They would stay in their own town for their, for their education. It would be a K through 12 regionalization, but the elementary students would move. The middle school students would move to a true middle school and that would be housed here in our high school. And the high school students would go to Warren for high school. So that's the three-minute version of the explanation of what's going on. But I would strongly encourage you to pay attention to what's going on with regard to the regionalization. If, if, if you have students in the school.
If you have students in the school district, it's very important.
Will they be back in the auditorium again over there? Last time, they were in the library. That threw me off. I wandered around Quaybod.
If you give me one moment, I'll tell you where we're supposed to be. I apologize. But there was some discussion back and forth. So give me one moment.
Especially if you've never been to Quaybod before. It's easy to get lost. Although everything does loop around.
Although, Tim, you'll have to tell me. Because on the email I have, it says the meeting is at 6 o'clock tomorrow. And then I was told today it was at 6:30. Is it 6:00? 6:30?
That was the email that I saw this afternoon.
Okay. If you get there early, bring a snack. There's no food served.
Yeah, I have a question. And it's probably...
I'll leave the glass, can't wait.
Still early, but... Do the seats that each community has, like, you know, for Bay Path, does that change? Or do we stay the same with our seats? Because that's based on the population.
So I apologize to your question. I don't know the answer because I don't see that in the email. But I... Was that in the communication you had, Tim, with Andrew?
What was the question?
The location of the meeting. You showed...
It says Quaybod Auditorium. So the 6:30.
Yeah. All right. Perfect. So to answer your question, it would be part of the regionalization agreement to decide how the school committee would be made up. But it...
But the Bay Path seats? The school committee, I thought they said at this point, you're staying the same.
I'm sorry.
There's a transitional...
There's a transitional year that's going to take place. I don't... There's been no conversation about Bay Path.
Because they're going to have...
No, that's far off. I think that would be something that's on the table right now.
No, I didn't know.
I can't join Bay Path. Only Northbrook Field.
No. Right. But they'll have their own, whatever it's Blackstone, whatever the other two towns have. Because we have it in our, like, we have Monique, we have Long Tech.
So they're probably a member of Pathfinder, I'm going to guess, if they're a member of any...
I would assume so, but I'm not sure.
But I mean, like, our town. Like, is that something that will eventually be discussed? Because even though...
No, it would have to be part of the regionalization agreement because we are...
Because we can't accept people from Warren or Westbrook Field.
No, I understand. But if we're going to join as a regional district, we can't have two contracts that are basic contracts that send students to one town, to one school, based on where they live and to another. I don't believe...
In my regional district, they do.
Well, do they?
But do Monique Tech and we do Bay Path.
Northbrook Field specifically is Bay Path. And I know some kids go to Pathfinder from Northbrook Field as well. But those kids will still go to Bay Path if they choose to from Northbrook Field.
But a lot of this stuff is still very early.
Yeah, it's still wrong. I was going to say, so regarding the seats, I would imagine that would probably be based on a lot of things. I think population is one of them.
So I didn't know.
But that's far down the line. If that's going to change or not.
It's not something that we have an answer for right now.
Okay. No, you know, as a parent.
It's not going to change. It's based on the population, just as Northbrook Field.
Okay.
It can change because of population.
My only thought was that as a regional district, the regional district could decide not to continue either of those two agreements.
I don't think so. So my understanding is all 10 towns of Bay Path would have to choose, or all other nine towns would have to choose to let Northbrook Field out of that. Because I know, like, Frinsen Spencer is part of Bay Path, but East Brookfield's not. So if you call East Brookfield, you can't go to Bay Path. Because the town chose not to join when they did that.
Okay.
From my understanding.
But even though it's early, again, as a parent, that is stuff that, you know...
Yeah. All I'm saying to you is, we have not gotten there yet. Not even close. Right? So...
Doesn't hurt to know.
No, absolutely. It's a good question. I haven't given it any thought, honestly.
Well, it's...
That's your update. That's as much as I got.
All right. Now, we can do new business. Chris?
So the only thing that I was asking is, at the board Selectment meeting, I know people keep bringing this up. And I know we've talked about it in the past. And it's been, yeah, we ask or no, we haven't asked. And I just think that maybe considering we adopted a new policy for the ownership of social media, as students leave the district, I think maybe we could discuss possibly having some sort of agreed-upon policy for, like, an exit survey that would be accessible to at least the school committee members as well as the superintendent. And I think that moving forward, I know, like, I've been here for a little over a year now. I've never had direct access to anything of why students have left. And I think that if we're going to continue to make decisions on what we should be focusing on as a district, I think having data of why people are leaving and maybe things that they aren't happy about would be something that would be beneficial for us to see. So I don't know if that's something that we can create a policy for, to have some sort of exit survey that we could maybe agree on that, you know, these are some questions that we would like to ask people so we can actually start collecting some of that information.
I'll make a motion that we direct a policy committee to come up with one. I'll second that.
There you go.
Okay.
All right. All in favor of the policy subcommittee looking into the possibility of an exit survey?
I didn't mean to throw that in. I'm just saying, that's where we're coming from. It's a policy.
I just wanted to...
Why don't like day-to-day operations be in control over? In term, but like, something like this when the kids are leaving the district and the families are pulling themselves over.
Chris, I completely agree with you. I think this is a great thing. And I... But I'm just saying, if it's a policy, it has to come from the subcommittee. So that's why...
Then you guys, as a subcommittee, can work on it with Tim and the other administrations.
Yeah, of course. That would be obviously...
Otherwise, we'd have to wait every month and have a discussion about it here.
It would be something that we develop just as a...
I think it's a great idea.
Yep.
Maybe you can even tack something in along there about having a... why people are coming in here. Because we do get some...
Entry service?
Yeah.
Exit service?
That's actually good, too. Yep.
Yeah. I think I would also look at including something of, you know, if we're going, if we're looking at the district making the attempt of reaching out to families who are leaving, you know, how are we doing it? When are we doing it? When are we reporting it back to the town? Because I think that's big, too. A lot of people in town ask that question a lot. Like, hey, why are these people leaving? And I think having something in there to say, okay, here's when the update will come, you know,